Okay, so. Good evening, everyone. I have a majority of the council members here. Um, thank you. I was just gonna say something, Luke. We have all the council members here. Uh, so I'd like to call this meeting to order today, April second. This is a virtual meeting and it's a legislative meeting of the mayor council for the city of Mount Rainier. Luke Chesek?
Here.
Jared Stoffus?
I'm here.
Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Danielle Carter?
Here.
All right, so we have a full quorum. Uh, Luke, can I please ask you to lead the pledge allegiance for us as our vice mayor?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So we're gonna move on to item number two. So two things I wanna do, one of them is that before we view it, we are gonna be adding after mayor and council event announcements, uh, the D dot presentation. We do have their representatives here. So that's gonna be added. And also, we're gonna take a moment of silence. Um, as you guys are fully aware, um, we had a big tragedy since we last met, um, when it came to Baltimore. So wanna make sure we also, um, take a moment of silence for that. So I'm gonna ask for first, uh, Luke, can you review the whole agenda? Melly will go ahead and add that, and then we'll take the moment of silence, okay?
Okay. So this is the agenda of the legislative meeting of the mayor and council for Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty four, seven P M. It's a virtual meeting. One, call to order pledge of allegiance. Two, review of the agenda. Three, mayor and council member event announcements. Four, presentation and discussion on building application for four zero zero six thirtieth street, Mount Rainier. The owner of four zero zero thirty thirtieth street will have a presentation. Five, public comment. Please see page four of the agenda for ru- for rules. Uh, it under old business, number six, appointment of Ms. Tesla Wilson to the arts commission. Number seven, second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero one, twenty twenty four. Budget amendment number one, we will have a second reading and adoption of that ordinance. Number eight, discussion and vote on the city's rent stabilization. Uh, we will vote on extending the deferment of the city's rent stabilization effective date. Nine, ARPA discussion and vote number thirty seven, the mayor and council will vote on the following projects. Business interruption fund of forty five thousand dollars, police department basement for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Premium pay for frontline workers of ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, ARPA consults consultant for fifty thousand dollars. And the reallocation of funds from thirty first street and Perry street, small business assistance, rental and utility assistance, vaccine incentive, program manager, thirty four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue, and police computers. Under new business, number ten, first reading of ordinance number zero two, twenty twenty four budget amendment number two, of the first reading of that ordinance. Number eleven, we'll vote on approval of minutes, uh, for the February twentieth, twenty twenty four work session, the March second, twenty twenty four community conversation on the intersection of thirty first and Perry streets and March fifth, twenty twenty four legislative meeting. And then I believe we're adding a number twelve for a presentation from D dot. And then number thirteen will be a German. And there is, um, the presentation and discussion on safety improvements of the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Rhode Island Avenue by the District of Columbia Department of Transportation. And that will not be item number thirteen, that will be item number four, apologies.
Thank you so much. So, um, I did ask for us to take a moment of silence. Um, I'm gonna ask for us to approve the agenda and move on to a moment of silence after that, okay? So are we all good with the agenda that's presented as amended? Adding the two different items? Okay. Thank you guys so much, um, for for being able to be as flexible as you guys are. Okay, so, um, I'll definitely, I think that is all over the news. Uh, and sadly, the tragedy that happened in Baltimore, um, unfortunately, several lives were, um, lost. And, um, you know, the first responders right now are doing a lot of work in, you know, trying to, um, find some, some balance, but right now it's like, it's, you know, unfortunately, like, you know, lots were lost, the families are suffering in the communities really hard, I think. Collectively, as Maryland, we are, we're strong and, you know, the, the saying is Baltimore, you know, tough and definitely Maryland, Maryland's strong, right? So I'd like to take a moment of silence for the lives that were lost and also in a way to thank our first responders who are also risking their life through the tragedy tragedy, but also even currently, um, now. So I'll go ahead and start the moment of silence and, and I'll pause this when we come back in, okay? Thank you guys so much, and we have, uh, reached out to Mayor Scott. And, um, big thank you to President Biden, Governor Moore, you know, um, Secretary Pete, they're all working really hard with, um, Baltimore's mayor, mayor and council over there as well. In order to provide the funding that is needed to get to what the new normal is and at the same time, um, work with, um, families of the victims and also make sure that the other workers that heavily depend on, on the port, um, there is, um, some help for them and that the port is reopened, but it's gonna take a lot of e- time and effort and all of us working together, but a hundred percent very strong mobilization, um, from all of our, um, from the community and all the elected officials as well. So thank you for that. All right, so, um, I'd like to move on to mayor constant bourbon announcements. I'm gonna start with word two, Valerie.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, so April twentieth is the community cleanup, um, and brunch from the recreation committee. Um, so if you're interested in participating in that, um, I, I think the city has blasted that out a few times, it's on social media. You can always email recreationcommittee@mountrainiermd.org to find out more, um, but that should be a fun community cleanup event. Um, May eleventh is the open studios tour. Um, May thirty first, um, is the P T O carnival, um, which is a really fun event, is a big event, uh, for the community to participate in. Um, June fifteenth, the recreation committee is hosting its pride parade again, um, so hopefully everybody will come out for that. And then the last thing is that, um, uh, people have asked about the community yard sale that has, um, been done by the recreation committee over the last couple of years. Um, and, um, that will be held in the fall, so just stay tuned on that. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. All right, Jared?
Uh, nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Perfect, Luke.
Nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
All right, Danielle?
Yes, um, the, uh, search team will be meeting this month on Monday, April twenty second at seven o'clock, uh, seven thirty P M. In the community room at the police station. Also, April is autism awareness month. Um, every experience of autism is unique. Not every one person will identify with every feature of autism. We all have individual skills, attributes, and characteristics that are as unique as our personalities. This is the power of neurodiversity. So if you know someone, um, who is autistic, this is a month to celebrate them and spread the word that just because we're neurodiverse, it doesn't mean we're not normal. Thank you.
Okay, Melly, thank you for putting the events up. We have the Mount Rainier Ekhan on this Saturday, April sixth, from eleven to two P M. At the nature center. The budget public hearing, uh, for proposed F Y twenty twenty five will be held on April ninth at seven P M. And it'll be virtual. The community health and research fair will be held on April twentieth, nine A M. To three P M. At the Mount Rainier Nature Center. The, and I think Valerie already said that, but Recreation Community Committee Community Cleanup Day will be a brunch. April twenty as well, the same day. So after you go get your health check, you could always come and clean up or vice versa. Ten thirty to twelve, Mount Rainier Day is May eighteen at eleven, uh, from eleven to five, and the parade will be right before that. Uh, the Mount Nature, Nature Center, and some of you guys know, we've been heavily involved in doing a lot of legislation. Actually, I was in Annapolis today to speak on several bills and, um, Monday is sign and die, so the legislative season is coming to an end. I am very happy to say that the Board of Public Works will be having a discussion on some funding when it comes to the city of Mount Rainier that was pre, um, pre-voted and it was very heavily supported by our delegation. And, um, with tomorrow vote, that means like that funding should be, um, fully approved for us, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All right, so that's been, I mean, I could give you a rundown of everything we've been doing, but I'm trying to keep this meeting short. Um, and, um, inefficient. So, um, in saying that, we are heavily involved with the communities. I've been meeting with some of the community members, and we're looking forward to meeting even with more of them. And, um, I look forward to continue collaborating with the P T Os who have been doing announced any work when it comes to community and cultural awareness and representation and also making sure that, um, little kids continue to learn and, you know, it's, it's very fun and exciting to see everything they're doing. So please make sure you support them. They do have the carnival coming up. And, you know, when they have movie nights, please show up as well, because that's the way the P T Os do their fundraising in order to be able to more effectively work with the community. All right? Okay, um, I'll leave it at that for right now, but it, it's been a lo- a long two weeks. All right, so presentation and discussing a safety improvement of the entrance station of Eastern Avenue and Rhode Island Avenue by the District Columbia Department of Transportation known as D dot. The mayor council received a presentation from Ms., um, wait, I'm so sorry if I butcher your name. Sorry, um, of the District Columbia Department of Transportation. Thank you guys for being here, for being wonderful partners. I know we have not always been very good neighbors and partners, but that has changed so much, and we're very appreciative of the, um, time and effort you guys have put forward, including, um, great communication relationships. So, um, I'll see you the floor to tell us about what's the upcoming, um, what's the upcoming plans that we're very excited to share. Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and, uh, we are excited to be here. Uh, uh, I am Azadeen Ouzi. I'm the acting manager for D dot's safety team. First of all, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk about the upcoming uh, safety improvement project and also thank you again for accommodating and request, including us, uh, though it was a short one, it's in tonight's agenda. So with that, let me share my screen.
Melly, can you give her sharing capability? Thank you, Melly. You're on top of it.
So can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Great. So. So tonight, we're gonna talk about the, uh, safety improvements and the intersection of Eastern Avenue, Rhode Island Avenue, and Otis. This is, uh, this intersection is right at the border of D C and city of Mount Rainier. This is, uh, an effort as part of the highway safety improvement program. This is a federally funded program which requires data-driven strategic approach for to make all the public road, roads, uh, safer with more focus on performance. Um, we broke down this program into several projects, including this one, that this is gonna be done under this project. We call it ISIP. It is Intersection Safety Improvement Project. It is more focused on the spot safety improvements at the intersections, meaning the most crash-prone intersections in throughout the district, which this intersection was one of them. This is to address the safety issues based on the crash pattern. So basically, we collect data. The crashes which occurred over a three-year period, the traffic volume, uh, the, um, signal, the current signal operation, how it looks like, and if there are any side distance issues or, um, you know, about the geometry of the intersection, we look at all this and may make the decisions to address the safety issues. So these are typically low-cost and high-impact, um, projects, which is like that we use the programmatic improvements like the retro reflective backplates. Uh, and I will go over all these countermeasures later in my presentation, no turn on red. If there are any ways for us to make the signal operations safer for all the road users, especially the vulnerable ones like pedestrians and cyclists, if the signal heads are visible, if the pedestrian ramps comply with the American Disability Act guideline. If there, there is any room for us to, uh, you know, modify the signing and marking to make the intersection, you know, function safer, like we can, you know, add the extension lines to provide more guidance to the drivers. If we should add any parking restriction, uh, at the intersection to make it more visible. And if there are any, you know, maintenance issues like faded signs, crooked signs, um, we address all of this as part of this project. So here is the, uh, crash diagram that we drew for this intersection. And here are all the symbols that we have used, uh, for this crash diagram. As you can see, uh, we see a pattern of rear-end crashes at this intersection, especially on northern and southern leg. We see, uh, you know, a pattern of, you know, angle type crashes, which they are responsible for more, um, you know, as, you know, injury type crashes. Unfortunately, there is one crash here involved, a pedestrian, there is one inclement weather crash here. So we look at all this, we collect all that information, all that data. And we came up with these countermeasures. These are all proven safety countermeasures by, um, federal highway administration. So first of all, we will add lead pedestrian interval for the signal phasing, which means that we will give a pedestrian right away at the beginning of each signal phase, which no other vehicular, uh, movement is allowed during this phase. This will make this safer for vulnerable road users. And also, we will convert the permissive left turns to protect it, like the arrow type, meaning that, you know, for the permissive left turns are allowed while the opposing through traffic signal is running. But this will make them separate. So it will be safer to make the left turns and right turns. Um, we will add the push buttons and countdowns uh, to enhance pedestrian safety and reduce crashes involved the pedestrians. We will add the no turn on reds for all approaches to mitigate the right turn crashes. And also, we will install the, um, high-visibility retro reflective backplates, that this is the a backplate with the conspicuous border to make the signal heads more visible, especially during dark time. This will mitigate the chance of rear-end crashes. Uh, we will also install the, uh, line extension in the middle of the intersection to provide more guidance to the drivers and help them stay in the lane that they are supposed to. And we will also, um, modify the signing and marking wherever there is some opportunity, like adding the, um, high-visibility crosswalk here. Or adding the stop bar on this leg right at Eastern Avenue, we will add the parking restriction signs to provide clearance at this intersection. Um, so hopefully all this, it will make this intersection safer for all road users. So with that, uh, I'll be happy to answer if there are any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation and making it, uh, concise. So I'm gonna go to word two first and sister word, you know, and, um, so we're gonna go with Jared first and then Valerie. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanna thank you so much for, uh, for coming in tonight. It's, um, fantastic presentation and uh, I just wanted to remind folks, for folks watching this now or later, um, Eastern Avenue is entirely in the District of Columbia. I know a lot of folks think it splits down the middle, uh, western sides, D C, eastern sides, Maryland, but it's entirely in D C. So, um, you know, as, as you know, as folks here know, uh, there's a lot of impacts, um, that the design of the street in D C actually has on our residents as folks, uh, you know, turn into roads like Otis, Rhode Island, or further up, um, further up north, uh, the twenty ninth, thirtieth, twenty eighth, uh, and so forth. So, um, you know, it's a lot of safety challenges at this intersection, and, um, I'm just really happy with the steps you all are taking. Um, just to clarify, it looks like you're gonna add crosswalks. Uh, and there largely are none or re-in- reinforce them at the, uh, intersection uh, that you're gonna add. So right now, there's basically two travel lanes, northbound and southbound. You will add left and right turn lanes at each intersection. Um, and then have one kind of, uh, straight through, and then there would be markings, uh, signage at every, at every point on the intersection for no turn on red. So I just wanted to ask if I missed anything, um, major there.
Yeah, we pretty much covered everything. Yes, correct. Yeah, this is a signal operation, um, you know, modified signal operation, I think it's gonna make change. Especially that we will have like protected, um, left turns for, uh, you know, for the, you know, for the left turn traffic, and also we will add L P I, the lead pedestrian interval, just so it will, you know, make it safer for the pedestrians to cross the street.
Oh, that's fantastic. Um, I think only, sorry, two questions I had. One was just what the timeline was for this, and the second was, um, I saw further south on Eastern Avenue, you'd, uh, put in some new lane markings, uh, for turning onto Blainsburg Road. Um, and just kind of curious what any information campaigns or anything you did, or are there informations, uh, sorry, is there materials or things that you could provide to us that we can provide to our community to make sure they're aware?
One second, Jared, make sure you ask both of your questions, because if not, you will time out and need to make sure that you do it all concise together, because it's not a conversation, remember that. You had another question or just that one?
That was it. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So ca- can you start with your first question, please?
Yeah, the first question was the timeline for implementation.
Sure. So, um, we are ready to push the, you know, the project to construction very soon, over the next few weeks. If you, uh, if you know, if you have the, um, you know, it's acceptable to you, all the proposed treatments, we can push it to construction over the next few weeks, I would say next month. Um, so that is the timeline, and hopefully it will be implemented, I would say, within two months.
Uh, and the, the other question was further south on Eastern Avenue, I noticed you'd done some new lane markings where Eastern hits Blainsburg Road. And, uh, I think that's Cottage City, uh, or Korn Manor. Yeah.
I, I need to check on that project, um, if we can discuss it offline.
Yep, no, just curious if you have materials that you furnished to them, um, for when you implement the project, if there's things that we can share with our community to help make them aware.
So I need to find out the project manager for that effort.
So we'll talk about that offline and we'll follow up with it, okay? All right, so try to make sure we stay concise, because then it shows favoritism and I don't wanna go there. All right, Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, thank you. I'm, and I, I feel what Jared said, and thank you to Mr. Kamali and, and all of the D dot, um, staff that are working on this. This is exciting because this intersection has been such a challenge, um, and I think, um, you guys addressing this is gonna, is gonna make a huge difference for our community and for yours. Um, so I don't really have any questions, Jared basically asked all mine, so, um, I will, um, I will move on from that, but thank you very much for working with us on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Valerie. Danielle, Luke?
Okay, yeah, no, thank you so much. As a former first responder, that intersection has made me cringe for as long as I've lived here, which is thirteen years. So I, I, I know that, you know, as somebody who's tried to navigate that in emergency, uh, vehicles, I'm very grateful to see you guys doing something. Um, and I know that the residents around here will be appreciative of that too. So thank you so much.
Sure. We are excited to improve safety.
Luke?
No questions. Everyone asked the questions I wanted to ask, so thank you, Jared, and thanks everyone else. Appreciate it.
And a bad Jared. Uh, Mr. Kamali, anything to add? I know you're working closely with them as well.
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor. I'm just.
I'm just so excited for the project and I look forward to be working with them. And hopefully, we get this one done this summer. I do appreciate their, you know, their time and effort that making our community safer.
So I think that when it comes to material, whatever you need to send to us so we could communicate to our residents as well, we're happy to share in building that communication. And we look forward to a ribbon cutting or whatever else you need our support with. Um, I will say I'll let you go, because basically, we are in support. And you need to get to work and it's been a long day for you. So basically, at this point, we're holding you back from, you know, setting the approval on it. But please be aware that we are extremely appreciative of the collaboration we are having with D-Dot, right, and with your office as well and your whole entire team. We are fully aware that is, you know, it is your area, but the fact that you guys are working with us and taking us into account. And we have a good partnership between, you know, both areas, I think it's important. Because we both know that, you know, both Mount Rainier just is like, you know, District Five, you know, in D.C. like commute back and forward. So anything, you know, we continue to continue strengthening our relationships, it's outstanding. So have a wonderful night and thank you so much for being here. We look forward to like, you know, revealing what all those marks and signs and everything else that's wonderful that's coming over, okay? All right, have a good night.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. We've actually shared these, the plan set with, yeah, with you guys. If you can, please just respond back to us. If you have any comments for us, we will be happy to address. Or if, you know, it's, we are in agreement, that would be, that's the great news. So we can push it to construction.
We will send that out tonight, as, as you know. If we're not even, if we're taking a break today, I'll send it over. But tonight, you'll have that answer. But thank you so much for being here, okay?
Sure, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. All right, so we had a wonderful presentation by D-Dot. And we're very excited if the new things are gonna be coming, so thank you so much. And moving on to presentation and discussion on building application for 4006 30th Street in Mount Rainier. It's a 10 minute, um, 10 minute discussion. Mayor and Council will have a presentation from the owner of 4006 30th Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. We're gonna start with our Director of Public Works, Ms. Alma Farofino, to give us a little bit of information and to let us know if anything's needed. And then we'll pass it on to the resident, if, I believe they're here. Yes, I think they're here. Hi, all right, Alma, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for having us here today. We are here to do a presentation on a building permit for 4006 30th Street. I believe Mr. Haver is here, I can see him. If you would like to start doing your presentation.
Sure.
Perfect, so I'm gonna see the floor to you guys. Wrap it up within five minutes. We love you guys, so that way the council could have the other five minutes to ask questions, okay? But thank you guys so much for being here tonight. And as you can tell, we're trying to present and let you guys go with your life. All right, go ahead.
Yep, thank you for having us. My name is Dan Haber, this is my wife Megan. And we are lucky to be working with Nathan Cedarth to design this garage. It's a detached garage that will be behind our house at the end of our driveway. Yep, we're, we're looking forward to having more space for electric car charging, outdoor activity, storage. And we have an additional house renovation project coming up, so this would give space for storage and a little workshop area to improve our house. So, yeah, not really sure what else to add, but we're very excited to have this.
Perfect. Alma, is, has the permit been approved through the county and everything else before I send it to Luke for the Brian's bill?
Yes, it is, Mayor, everything has been approved.
Okay, any, um, has it had to go to DRB or no?
No, not at all.
All right, perfect, thank you so much. All right, Luke, we're gonna start. Can you please give the parineller, um, vote of confidence field to come to our residents? And Nathan, 100% knows that, but we always make sure we're fair and equitable, go on.
Thanks y'all for doing, doing work and improving your property in Mount Rainier. No construction before 8:00 a.m., no construction after 8:00 p.m. If you do, we'll get calls from angry neighbors, which means we have to call you and be angry. So don't do that. Uh, we have an urban tree canopy code, which means there's protections for certain trees of certain diameters. So if there are large trees and you have questions about protection for them, talk to Alma, she'll get you all the details of what needs to be done. If you're moving large amounts of clay, be mindful of where those piles of clay are, that they're not next to neighbor's yards or next to sidewalks, because when it rains, then we get, you know, clay rivers that lead into either people's yards or the streets. And so just be mindful of that. And I'll hand it back to the mayor.
Perfect, thank you so much. So I'm gonna go to the, oof, I gotta, hold on one second, cause, um, let me go to council always first and then, all right. So thank you so much, Luke, for that. If you guys have any questions regarding what everything Luke said, it's something that our director already mentioned to you guys. But also, if you have any questions, you could directly talk to her. She knows all this wonderful information. She makes sure it's public, but publicly, we have to say it, so that way we could tell the neighbors and everybody else, like you guys were informed. All right, perfect, so go ahead, we're gonna go Danielle, Valerie, Jared, go on.
All right, thank you. I know, I know it's a great feeling whenever you have a project that you're, you know, it's like, this is gonna improve, I'm gonna feel good, it's gonna be a new part of the house. And then you say you've got some work coming to your house later. So I'm just excited for you guys and thanks for coming and presenting it to us, so thank you.
Valerie, Jared.
Um, yeah, I've seen some of the work being done, so congratulations. And I look forward to seeing it finished, so good job.
Perfect, thank you, Jared.
Yep, just echo what everyone else said, and thanks for doing work improving the city, appreciate it.
All right, perfect, so I have something. So Brooke, is it for public comment for this specific item or public comment period?
Just public comment period.
Oh, that's the next item, so, um, name, address, you could put it in the chat and I'll call upon you. All right, so I see nothing else from anybody else. So thank you guys for being here, for improving your house and the wonderful work you're doing. And remember, nothing before eight, nothing after eight, because we do get agricalls, or even people that love you, they will not be loving you after that, all right? But I'm looking forward to the different, you know, things that you guys are gonna be doing. And again, your point of contact is Director Code, Alma Farofino. In any way, we can help, we're here. So have a good night and you're welcome to enjoy the rest of the meeting or go on to continue working, you have 30 minutes, you could do something.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night, bye. All right, perfect, thank you guys so much. We're moving on to item number six, public comment. Um, can you put the blurb on it? You have three minutes to speak on public comment on items that are on the agenda. Focus on the agenda items. This is ideally for items that are not on the agenda. But we understand that if you don't want to stay late with us, you could make a public comment then. Three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you could have up to five minutes, but also means that your whole collective group will not be able to speak. And you need to be recognized by the group to be able to do it. Um, and we are asking to please make sure, if you have a complaint when it comes to staff, you know, address it to our wonderful city manager. It is his staff, he runs the day to day, so it's his responsibility. Right, Mr. Kamali? Um, so that said, um, if there's a complaint about neighbors or businesses, please use street and block number, not the business person and not the residents' names, neither. And we ask for you to be courteous and maintain the core when you're speaking, all right? So name, street block as an example, 4300 block of 34th Street. And state your name and last name. So Brooke, you're the, you're first one, um, you're first one on deck, go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here at the council meeting. My name is Brooke Kidd and I'm speaking on behalf of the business Joe's Movement Emporium in the 3300 block of Bunker Hill Road. I just wanted to provide some updates on some really awesome programs that are happening at Joe's. The Arte para Todos program has been a huge success in this past year to create arts experiences instructed in Spanish. Currently, we're continuing with our toddler program called Mi Adulto Ayo. We are filled to capacity and it's so sweet. And we also have this fantastic music series called Palante. And there will be events next week, so please check it out on our website or social media follows. We have a program called Greenworks and it's an environmental stewardship program. And you first heard about our program through our stream teamwork of maintaining the trash trap on a rundle road. And then we got into a Chesapeake Bay Trust grant to plant trees. And by the end of April, our team will have planted 500 trees in Prince George's County in the past 14 months. And so we've been moving young adults from our Creative Works program and in the community into learning about green jobs. We have some other opportunities through some partnerships and state grants. And that's why we've expanded, called it at Greenworks. Along the way, we are seeing the devastation of invasive vines on our mature trees. And we have met the wonderful people at Chesapeake Climate Action Network, C-CAN, who have a program called Tree Savers. And we're really looking for funding to be able to bring this program to Mount Rainier and make sure that we tend to our mature trees and not lose them. And one of the most important things that we can all do is start to remove English ivy from our properties. It's the number one vine choking our trees. So this, on April 13th, one of the public events that's happening through this great partnership, especially with Mount Rainier Nature Center and Prince George's Autobahn Naturalist Society, is called the Garden Crawl. And that's gonna be April 13th, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. You can go to Mount Rainier Elementary School and remove English ivy. And you can walk through the neighborhood and enjoy some of the beautiful work that people are doing to be stewards of our local environment and wildlife habitat. So I'll, I'll drop the link in the chat for people to explore. And that's kind of the key updates I wanted to share with you all.
Thank you so much, Brooke. And please thank your whole entire team, because I know they work really hard. Okay, do me a favor, can you send us whatever flyers, information you have, so we could share it and add it to our calendar as well, so we could help amplify the message in order to have like more residents aware of what's going on. And 500 trees is a lot, is this the total you're gonna do for this year? You're planning on doing a little bit more before June?
Uh, the green, uh, the Garden Crawl is April 13th. And the tree planting, we've done some in, um, in Bunker Hill. And then next year, we'll have another round of tree planting. And most likely, apart, um, and some trees to go into Mount Rainier as well for a fall planting.
Perfect, thank you so much for all the work.
Yeah.
All right, so, yay, all right, perfect. Anybody else for public comment? Going once, going twice? Anything on Facebook, Jared, with a D? All right, and going three times. Public comment has now officially been closed. We're moving on to all item, all business, item number seven, appointment of Ms. Tesla Wilson to the Arts Commission. Mayor and Council will appoint Ms. Wilson to the Arts Commission. So Luke, I'm gonna give you the floor to introduce who we'd like to speak. Oh, I see Tori, hi Tori, you know, and behalf of the Arts Commission, go on.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Arts Commission is starting to gear back up again. We've had a few members drop off. And so we're trying to get our membership increase. And Ms. Wilson has agreed to submit an application to join and help out Tori, who is the lone remaining member of the Arts Commission. And we appreciate her staying on. Thank you, Tori, for helping with the, with the rebirth here. And Tesla, thank you so much for submitting your application. Before we go ahead and do a vote, I just want to give Tesla, if you want to take a few minutes to, to speak, you don't have to, but if you want to tell us kind of why you want to join the Arts Commission and your background and history here with Mount Rainier, I think that would be great.
So Tesla, thank you for being here with us and the floor is yours if you wanted.
Sure, I didn't prepare a statement, but glad to all of you all officially. I've lived in, or my husband and I have lived in Mount Rainier for, since 2021. And we really love the arts community that, you know, we've got to be a part of by being here. And I just really welcome the opportunity to support local artists, help beautify the community, and really deepen that, my connection with Mount Rainier. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to join this team, so thank you for considering me.
Perfect, thank you so, thank you so much for volunteering. I mean, our, our volunteers definitely fueled the city and the committees. We wouldn't, we don't have enough staffing to do the wonderful things we did. If the volunteers wouldn't step up and we have a lot of wonderful residents that are very talented and skillful and are willing to step up. And as an example, Tori, who's, I mean, I follow her on Instagram. My goodness, sorry, you've been busy, super busy, new maps I see. But you always know, Mount Rainier's home, so I love that as well. I let them know. Perfect, so I'm gonna call for a vote. Um, so I'm gonna have a motion of floor to, um, appoint Ms. Tesla Wilson to the Arts, the Mount Rainier Arts Commission. Can I have a second?
Second.
Cause we're probably moving second, any discussion? Objections, suspensions, hearing none? Ms. Wilson, welcome to the Arts Committee. We look forward to great and wonderful collaboration and, you know, it's always outstanding to have people like be involved. All right, so, um, like I told everybody else, you're welcome to join or continue rewatching the meeting or not. I don't want you to feel obligated, but thank you, Tori, as well. And like, you know, looking forward to even more projects, so, bye you guys, take care. All right, so moving on to the next item, second reading adoption of ordinance 01-2024, Budget Amendment Number One. The Mayor and Council will have the second reading adoption of ordinance 01-2024. And remember, all these items are going for a vote. All right, so the wonderful thing about having a wonderful Vice Mayor is that they get to do a lot of wonderful reading. Go ahead, Luke, the floor is yours, can you go ahead and read the resolution, please?
Sure, this is ordinance number one, 2024, Budget Amendment Number One, authorizing a movement of funds in fiscal year 24 between line items. Whereas the City of Mount Rainier budget for FY24 was adopted by ordinance number 052023 in May 2023. And whereas it has been deemed necessary to transfer funds between items to meet current demand for goods and services. And now therefore be it ordained that they, by the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, that the following transfer of funds between appropriations shall be made to the fiscal year 2024 budget of the City of Mount Rainier from line item 5412 temporary labor in the amount of $25,000 to line item 5001 overtime pay in the amount $25,000. This ordinance is adopted by the Council of the City of Mount Rainier the second day of April 2024. And I think we may have lost Mayor.
I'm here, sorry. I guess apparently I didn't mute my mic, that's why I don't mute it all the time. Melly, can you go back to the agenda, please?
What I think.
Right here, this is the second reading of the ordinance. So I'm gonna put a motion of floor to adopt ordinance 01-2024 Budget Amendment Number One. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Objections, suspensions, hearing none, this item is voted unanimously, all right? So moving on to item number nine, discussion and vote on the rent stabilization. The Mayor and Council vote on extending the defer of the city's rent stabilization effective day. As we have discussed, the county has extended their rent stabilization, so so will we. So we'll form under the county, which gives us, um, which wraps us up for this fiscal year, which for us is perfect, you know, because we're waiting for the county to make up their mind on what they wanted to do. So in the meantime, it gives us time to, um, continue working with those that are working in the committee, continue talking to our county council members and figure out where they land and figure out whether our rent stabilization ordinance will be a hybrid of it, stay alone, or what we decide to do with it, okay? So that is it and what's coming to it. So we'll go ahead and from my understanding, like the county council won the day finishes, it goes on the next day, so there's no gap where we need to feel that, um, that we need to protect our residents, so that way there's no change between days, they're gonna do it automatically. So the month, we're deciding for August 30th, for us to extend our rent stabilization pause until August 30, okay? So I'd like to put a motion in the floor to vote on extending the City of Mount Rainier rent stabilization to August 30th.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All right, hearing none, any objection, abstention, all right? So Alright, hearing none. Any objection, abstention? Alright, so now rent supervision has moved to August thirtieth. Okay, and if there's something that we need to revisit, we'll just, I'll bring it back to the agenda, okay? Perfect. Item number ten, ARPA discussion and vote number thirty seven. Mayor Council vote on the following projects. Business interruption fund for forty five thousand dollars, police department basement for a hundred and fifty thousand. Premium pay for frontline workers for ten thousand four hundred and fifty, ARPA consultant for fifty thousand. Reallocation of funds from Thirty One Street and Perry Street, small business assistant, rental utility assistance, fencing incentive program manager, forty nine oh nine Rhode Island Avenue, and police computer. Just as a throwback on this, all the items were discussed on, um, what's it called? Discussion number forty seven. So now you see the beautiful little thing right there. So um, we're gonna read line item by line item, so we know, first we're gonna work with that reallocation of funds, right? From what we originally approved to what we're gonna put it towards it. Okay? So um, Luke, you have a lot of exercise today, so.
Yeah.
So right ahead, this is, this is right on your alley. Go ahead.
Thank you, folks. Um, so this is for um, reallocating funding um, that we had previously allocated um, with our ARPA, with our ARPA funding. Um, and the projects that we will be taking, that we will be taking money from, um, uh, we will be taking seventy nine thousand dollars from the Thirty First Street and Perry Street project. That is because the grant funding will cover the expense. So we have seventy nine thousand dollars that is freed up there that we will be removing from that allocation. Uh, the small business assistance fund was approved for seventy thousand dollars. Um, we are removing ten thousand dollars of that, because ten thousand dollars of that um, went unfunded. Um, we are, we approved the rental and utility assistance fund for fifty five thousand dollars. We used almost all of that money, which is great. Um, we are moving the three hundred ninety two dollars and fifty six cents that was not moved out of that allocation. The vaccine incentive, we approved ten thousand dollars for. We did not end up using that because of funding that we had elsewhere, um, and we will move, remove ten thousand dollars um, from that appropriation. Um, the program manager position for three hundred thousand dollars, we approved for. Um, Melissa and Mr. Kamali have done an excellent job with managing our ARPA funds, so we have not needed that money. So we are going to reallocate that three hundred thousand dollars. Um, three four zero nine Rhode Island Avenue, um, that was for upgrades to that uh, building that the city owns. Uh, we approved forty five thousand dollars and we used almost all of it. Um, but we did not use five hundred ninety six dollars and sixty cents, so we will move that from that appropriated item. And the police computers were approved for fifty five thousand dollars. Um, uh, Police Chief um, Alston was able to get a grant to fund that, so we did not need to allocate money from ARPA. So we will remove that fifty five thousand dollar allocation for a total of um, uh, four hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and sixteen cents. Um, that we will be moving from the, the combination of those line items to, to projects that you see below here. Um, Potts Hall, we would, we've already approved one million dollars. We would add three hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and sixteen cents um, for a total revised figure of over one point three million dollars for Potts Hall. Um, the police department basement, which we did not.
Read the whole amount.
Sorry.
For the record.
One million.
This is federal recording, remember?
Three hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and sixteen cents is the total amount for Potts Hall that we will allocate. Um, and we have not allocated anything to.
Process of information. Thank you, Luke, so much for reading detail by detail. You're okay?
I think I said all remaining ARPA funding. I don't think that it would, that would be all remaining ARPA funding. I think that would just be the reallocation. Apologies.
It's okay. I was gonna clarify that right now. You're fine. Um, so as a matter of, as a point of information, at this point, it's like, we need to make sure that we have, uh, we have entered contract before December thirty first, all of our ARPA funding. So part of the project also includes for us, and last meeting, what we did, like we went through all the projects that ARPA, um, that we had for ARPA, to figure out if there was any money remaining on any of them, to try to put them together. And the council decided that we're gonna be moving them to the two projects, which was Potts Hall and also the police department basement, to make sure we finish those two projects, right? Anything else that was pre-approved? Uh, Brooke, I guess your question, your, your money is in a different, in a different fund, but if you were to not use one dollar, then that one dollar will go into Potts Hall. That's basically the way we're working right now. So the important for us to read through it is because there's various requirements for us to be able to get. Remember, this is for money that got allocated to us. And we're following every standard and measure we will do when it comes to like being transparent and informative. So that way, um, if later on the federal government says like, hey, like, we need to know, and they, our team does wonderful reports and everything, we could sit there and link the meetings where it says like, we have approved this much funding. And this is when we are reallocated and we went ahead and voted in support. So although it's sometimes it's a little bit flexible for us to do certain things, we're taking every single measure to take care of this money and be transparent with it, to make sure that later on, um, there's no questions about how the money got spent, how it got reallocated, and what changes um, in programs on it. So Mr. Kamali has a nice little information of sets that he submits. So that's the reason why I asked Luke to read down to the last few cents. So these are just the line items that we have revised so far to move into Potts Hall. We, as it gets closer to June, we're gonna do another read through to see if there's any other funding that needs to be moved. And ideally by September will be the last bit of chunk, so that way gives enough time for our team to make sure we know what amounts and numbers we need to have. And everything else is gonna fall into um, the Potts Hall project to make sure we continue to fund uh, the project. Okay? So that's my point of clarity. Alright, so let me see. So I hope that answers your, oh, sorry, Brooke. I hope that sounds, um, that answers your question. I apologize. But yeah, so anything that's been previously allocated, um, is gonna be moving forward. If you haven't signed the contracts information, work with Mr. Kamali to make it happen. But let's say if a project is supposed to be done by, let's say, whatever, ferry twenty nine, to give you a date. And we have a dollar left, and that money will have been in this list um, as of last meeting, to say like, this is what we need to move forward to the next round of projects. Okay, so that way we have it in motion, cause after that, after December thirty first, it has to be locked in. So that means that we have two years to spend it if it's under contract. However, if we do not spend it, we have to send it back, and we're doing our due diligence to not send one penny back. I know this whole entire council and Mr. Kamali and the whole entire team is not planning on sending one penny back. We will put every single penny into motion. Alright, so Melly can, alright. So, okay, so that was the reallocation of funds, right? Uh, okay, so I want us to go, so the other part of this is um, the business interruption fund, we need to approve forty five thousand dollars, police basement department was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Premium pay for frontline workers, ten thousand four hundred and fifty, ARPA consultant for fifty thousand. And we already read the reallocation, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve it as a book. Okay? We're clear, council? We're good?
Yeah.
So the way it's gonna work is I'm gonna make a motion, I'm, right now I'm gonna make the motion to approve the reallocations of funds that were read by council member, Vice Mayor, um, Lucchistic for Thirty First Street and Perry Street, small business assistant, rental utility assistance, passing and standing, program manager, for thirty nine, thirty four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue and police computers, as well as the allocation of ARPA consultant for fifty thousand. Premium pay for front, uh, for frontline workers for ten thousand four hundred and fifty. Police department basement for a hundred and fifty thousand, and business interruption fund for forty five thousand dollars. So that is my motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, has we properly moved in second, and now I'm gonna open it up for discussion. Can you guys please stop shaking your heads if you guys don't know procedure? Okay, so I'm gonna open it up for, for discussion, okay? And if you're not following the quorum, you could go ahead and leave as well. Alright, so Luke, go ahead. Are you good? Anything to add?
Nope, thank you.
Alright, good job, Jared.
I'm good.
Good, Valerie?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with this.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. Um, I don't agree with the entire reallocation, um, the recommended allocation. I feel very strongly that we need to take fifty thousand dollars of the money and give it to the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. We continue to thank them for their service, but refuse to give them any money. They even pay for the sanatorium at Christmas out of their own pocket, and we can't even give them money for the candy for that event. I am going on record and saying that according to the city charter under the general powers of mayor and council, section four oh two, paragraph A, number nineteen, it states to contribute funds to volunteer fire companies serving the city. When was the last time since any of you have been on council, at least, that the city has requested a budget request from the Volunteer Fire Department? They sat here on February twentieth and showed in a letter where the county only gives them two thousand five hundred dollars. They are in need. They ask for our help and we need to give it to them. The city has not given them any funds since two thousand and seven, and that needs to be changed this budget season with this ARPA money, or we may not have a volunteer fire department next year, and that is not a joke. When Station Fifty Five is out on a call, the paid vol, the paid career, who do you think is going to respond to the fires in our city if we do not have a volunteer unit here? Hyattsville and Bladensburg, they have a response time of between ten and fifteen minutes, depending on if cars.
Danielle, Danielle, we do, we do not hold on time. We do not insult other cities. We do not address other cities, because then that will create a problem. So I'm sorry, Danielle. Can you please shut her mic, please? Um, Danielle, you cannot sit there and insult another city. You could name, uh, you could say other cities. Danielle, you need to stop. Please stop. Please stop. I'm asking you to please stop. Can Communications, please shut the mic. I ask you guys to please be the court. When it comes to other cities, do not address the city. If you're gonna say something about them, you could say other cities, other fire departments, deal with this, cause I'll tell you this, I would not appreciate if I have another city speaking bad about me in a meeting. So I'm trying to be respectful of other fire departments and other people that are also here. So let's please make sure we keep that decorum and be, that decorum for our city and other cities and other fire departments need to still be there. So I ask you guys to, please don't do that. I've asked this from the beginning, and I'm asking you guys to please stick to it. Okay? I need to make sure we're very respectful of that.
I am not, I did not disrespect anybody. I was speaking on respect.
Danielle, I'm asking you not to yell and scream. I was very polite, so please stop.
You were rude.
You need to stop, Danielle. Can you guys shut the mic, please? Thank you. Danielle, I'm not doing this. I was very clear in the beginning. Just stop, Danielle, please. If not, you're gonna be asked to leave. I cannot do this. I just can't. You know, I think that when we sit there and talk about other cities, we need to be very careful, other, other, other departments. I definitely will tell you that I would not like, as an example, somebody were to say that Department of X for the City of Mount Rainier takes this long to do this. I'd be very insulted for them to even mention us in their conversation. When it could easily be said, other cities do this, or whichever it is, unless we're speaking in positive of other cities or their departments, I don't think, you know, we need to be in the habit of making sure that we address the situation, because guess what? At the end of the day, I'm gonna be the one getting the calls of the other fire departments and the other cities being very upset at me for their fire departments and their cities being mentioned in my meeting. So you guys, you guys too, please don't do that. And I've been very, very polite in making sure that this doesn't happen. Okay? So I am gonna close um, this part right now, and I apologize for letting it go for as long as I did. The discussion was specifically on this points, and if something needs to be addressed, to be able to move funding around, it needs to go to an ARPA discussion like we have done with everything else. You guys know for a fact that even my items have like gone to a couple of discussions until you guys on it. Luke's item went to a couple of discussions, uh, maybe four discussions, Luke, before it even got even brought up here. So nobody's jumping the line on it. If somebody has another thought to do with ARPA then, or any funding for the city, please bring it to the work session. And let's do our due diligence like we all have done. You know, that's all I ask, and I will say this to you. I've asked you guys to please do the quorum. Now I have to call and apologize to the other two cities, because news travel very fast, and they're very proud of their departments and the work that they do. So please be aware of that. Like I said, we need to have the decorum to take care of our city and other cities. And if somebody wants to put an example, you could say, other cities have this response rate, and I think that's what we're gonna do. Mr. Kamali, have your hands up. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate that. So I just wanna uh, ask our, you know, great volunteer firefighter. My son is a volunteer firefighter. And he's been there for six years with Montgomery County Station seven oh three. But I do appreciate our volunteer firefighter send their request to the city manager. This afternoon, you and I were here and we just received it after five, I believe, that email. And you know, that's, timing is very important, and I do appreciate if they need any funding, they should communicate with the city manager, then I can convey the information to Mayor and Council. No matter it's, it's the ARPA money or is the city's money. So at the last minute, I do not appreciate to have, you know, a request for fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I think we all got that email, and I didn't read that in the email, to be honest. I think it was like, the email stated that they got some funding. Um, but I don't wanna move away from the item, because I feel like we're, we're supposed to have a discussion on whether or not we approve this funding as it stands. And I think we moved on it, so I do wanna apologize to the rest of council, because I felt like I let it go for too long. I should have said if it does, if it's not involving these items, you know, um, bring it to a work session. So my apology for, for that. Um, and let it go. Sometimes I let it go a little bit, hoping that it will stop on its own. So um, I, I do my best to work with whatever I can. Alright, guys, so I'm gonna go on and I'm gonna call the question. Okay, that's where I'm gonna be at. So any, um, any abstentions?
Abstention?
Any objections? Alright, everybody else who fall under is four, one, zero? Thank you so much. So Melly, please make note of um, what the final call is, okay? Thank you so much.
Four, zero, one. I, I am against not extending.
Danielle, you need to like, realize that you made, you abstained and then you changed your vote. So I'm.
That is correct.
Stop, stop, stop. You don't have the floor, and I have no problem changing your vote, but you need to understand that Melly's not gonna write it down, because the call got in. This is for me to be able to tell her and then the city manager to be able to address it. So please stop. Okay, you're not her boss. Melly's like, help us run the meeting, but at the end of the day, she's employing Mr. Kamali. And sometimes I go ahead and address her to make sure she needs anything from me, it is fine. Okay, but you cannot sit there and just change a bit of weed after I called the final one. You could ask for the floor and ask for it to change. That's no problem, but you're like breaking every rule of the court. And I'll tell you this, I'm being very kind, because most mayors will have asked you to leave the room, even if it's a virtual room by now. And that means even if we were in person, you will have asked to leave already. So you need to realize that I'm, you're giving me, I'm giving you much patience. But I'm already extending my patience. If this continues, I'm gonna ask you to leave completely the room. And I'm not gonna hold back. You've done more than enough to damage when it comes to this. Melly, can you please um, go ahead and change the vote to four oh one? Thank you, Melly. Mr. Kamali, thank you so much for um, for the follow-up on that. And please, um, on the email from the fire department, reach out to them, so that way we could have them in the work session like previously discussed, and um, it shouldn't be a problem. You know, this is not a door being shut. It's just like, this is not the time to have this discussion when we're voting on something else. Alright, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. Alright, moving on to item number eleven, new business. First ring of ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty four, budget amendment number two, fifteen minutes. Mayor and Council will have the first ring of ordinance number oh two twenty twenty four. Uh, can we have it on the screen and Vice Mayor, will you do the honor of reading this wonderful resolution? Luke, are you there?
Luke, you're muted. Sorry. Okay, about that. Ordinance number two, zero two twenty twenty four, budget amendment number two, authorizing a movement of grant funds in the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget between line items. Whereas the City of Mount Rainier budget for F Y twenty four was adopted by ordinance number zero five, twenty twenty three in May, twenty twenty three. And whereas it has been deemed necessary to transfer funds between line items to meet current demand for goods and services. And now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that the following transfer of funds between appropriations shall be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget of the City of Mount Rainier, amount increasing grant revenue. Account four seven two zero point two zero, Thirty First Street and Perry Street, Green Street Project. Current budget five hundred and thirty thousand, an adjustment of four hundred and thirty thousand to a revised budget of a hundred thousand. Account four seven two zero dot three one, safety cameras slash gun and gang crime. Current budget of a hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty seven. Hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, an adjustment of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen. Dollars to a revised budget, line item of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty. Account four seven two zero point three five. Police retention and recruitment, P R, current budget of zero, an adjustment of fifteen thousand dollars to a revised budget of fifteen thousand dollars. Account four seven two zero dot three six, wayfinding signs, economic development. Current budget of zero, adjustment of twenty thousand dollars for revised budget of twenty thousand dollars. Four seven two seven, two zero dot three seven, packed the police accountability, community and transparency grant. Grant, current budget of zero dollars, adjustment of fifty-eight thousand dollars, one hundred, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and nine dollars for revised budget of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Four seven two zero dot three eight, burn justice assistance grant, police vehicle computer upgrades. Current budget of zero, adjustment of thirty-eight thousand dollars for a revised budget of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Four seven two zero dot three nine, Chesapeake Bay Trust Petway Stations. Current budget of zero, adjustment of ten thousand for a revised budget of ten thousand dollars. Four seven two zero dot four zero, Department of Housing and Community Development, thirty-fourth Street facade, phase two. Original allocation of zero, adjustment of seventy-five thousand dollars for a total allocation of seventy-five thousand dollars. Four seven two zero dot five oh, straight, sa- safe streets for all, capital project, initial allocation of zero. Um, amended allocation of seven hundred thousand dollars for a total allocation of seven hundred thousand dollars. The amount increase in grant expenses. Account five zero zero dot three five, the police retention and recruitment, current budget of zero, adjustment of eighty-two hundred dollars for revised budget of eighty-two hundred dollars. Account five one one zero point three five, uh, P R, other benefits. Current budget zero, adjustment of sixty-eight hundred dollars for a revised budget of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Five five oh four dot three six, wayfinding signs, economic development expense of zero, adjustment of twenty thousand dollars for a revised budget of twenty thousand dollars. Five two zero four dot three seven, packed police supplies. Initial allocation of zero, adjustment of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars for a total line item of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Total, total appropriation of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, or total expense, sorry. Five five four five dot three seven, packed for scholarships, initial. Um, of, of zero, adjustment of nine thousand dollars, totaling nine thousand dollars. Five six four eight dot three seven, packed for police advisory board, initial allocation zero. Adjustment of three thousand dollars for a total of three thousand dollars. Five four zero zero three seven, packed for services, initial zero. Adjustment of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight for total of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight. Five five six oh dot three eight, burn justice assistance grant, uh, police department, community purchases. Initial allocation zero, adjustment of thirty-eight thousand for a total of thirty-eight thousand. Chesapeake Bay Trust Petway Station, and five 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 point three nine. Um, initial allocation of zero, adjustment of ten thousand for total expense of ten thousand. Five seven zero zero point four zero, Department of Housing and Community Development, thirty-fourth Street facade, phase two. Initial expense zero, adjustment of seventy-five thousand dollars for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. Five seven two zero dot five zero, safe streets for all capital projects, initial. Expense of zero, adjustment of seven hundred thousand dollars for a total of seven hundred thousand dollar expense. And reclassifying expenses from line item zero three five five nine seven ARPA in the amount of two million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. To the following line items. Um, zero three five seven oh one, ARPA Pots Hall in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars. Zero three five seven oh four, ARPA Memorial Park in the amount of one million dollars. Zero three five seven two oh, ARPA Newton Street in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Zero three five seven one zero, ARPA Richardson Park in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Zero three five seven oh eight, ARPA Police payment placement in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Zero three five thousand, ARPA Social Worker in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Zero three five four zero zero, ARPA Consultant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Zero three five two oh two, ARPA Police Uniforms in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. Zero three five five four five, ARPA Youth Scholarship in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars. Zero three five five four two, ARPA Bike Co-op in the amount of four thousand dollars. And from line item five eight nine nine point two one, Police Basement in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. To line item five seven oh eight point two one, Police Basement Capital Project in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. From line item five eight nine nine point two four, Department of Housing and Community Development, Rhode Island Facade in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. To line item five seven zero zero point two four, Department of Housing and Community Development, Rhode Island Avenue Facade, Capital Project, amount fifty thousand dollars. From line item five eight nine nine point two five, Bond Bill Pots Hall in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To line item five seven oh one dot two five, Bond Bill Pots Hall Capital Project in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From line item five eight nine nine point two eight, Pepco Community Garden in the amount of ten thousand dollars. To line item five seven zero zero point two eight, Pepco Community Garden Capital Project in the amount of ten thousand dollars. From line item five eight nine nine point two nine, Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Richardson Park in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars, seven hundred. One hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. To line item five seven one zero point two nine, Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Richardson Park Capital Project in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. From line item five eight nine nine point three zero, Department of H- Housing and Community Development, thirty-fourth Street Facade in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. To line item five seven zero zero point three zero, Department of Housing and Community Development, thirty-fourth Street Facade Capital Project in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Amount increase slash decrease in revenue slash expenses. Account five eight nine nine point two oh, thirty-first street and Perry Street expenses, current budget five hundred and thirty thousand, adjustment. Down by four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a revised budget of one hundred thousand dollars. Account five eight nine nine point two oh, thirty-first street and Perry Street expenses, current budget five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Adjustment. Down by a hundred thousand dollars to four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Oh, those are Perry Street expenses. Five seven oh seven point two oh. Thirty-first street and Perry Street expenses, current budget zero, adjustment of one hundred thousand dollars to a revised budget of one hundred thousand dollars. Five eight nine nine point three one, safety cameras, gun and gang crime expense, current budget a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, an adjustment down. By a hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars to a revised budget of zero. Five five six oh. Point three one, safety cameras, gun and gang crime equipment. Current budget zero, adjustment of a hundred thousand, five, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars to a revised budget of a hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Five five six oh dot three one, safety cameras, gun and gang crime equipment, current budget zero, adjustment of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. For revised budget of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Five five zero zero dot three one, safety cameras, gun and gang crime overtime. Current budget of zero, adjustment of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty to a revised budget of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. That was the first reading, I believe.
Go back to the agenda, Melly. Sorry, my mic was muted. This was the first reading, yes. You have to do it one more time, Luke. First reading of ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty-four, budget amendment number two. There is no, uh, vote. It's just a read. Um, and as you guys can tell, our teams have been very, very busy. Doing a lot of grants, and the way it works is any grants that came in after our budget was approved. They need to be qualified into our budget, so that way, um. It shows that we're expending that money and where it comes from, so it balances out at the end of the year. If for whatever reason we allocated some money. And our team has, um, successfully gotten a grant to cover that expend, that is also reflected on that. So in saying that, I will close it with, um, thank you guys so much, our whole entire staff, you know, and some of our customers, and I know I have also helped with some of the grants. Um, in making sure that we get more funding, and this is the reason why we have not. Increased the percentage yield like, you know, at least in our taxes, um, because we have so much work when it comes to, um. Writing grants, okay? So item number twelve, vote on approval minutes. The mayor council vote on approving the minutes for February twenty twenty-four work session, March second, twenty twenty-four, community conversation. Interstation thirty-first and Perry Street, March fifth, twenty twenty-four legislative meeting. And again, thank you, Melly. For making sure we're up to date with all of our minutes, and these minutes have been submitted in the last few meetings. So this is a final vote. So I'm gonna move a motion in the floor to approve. All the minutes I just read, uh, submitted. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
If we probably second, any discussion? Objection, attentions, hearing none. We have voted to approve all this minutes. Thank you so much. Alright, moving on to item number thirteen. Um, hold on. Melly, aren't we gonna go into close session after this? The budget meeting ended on it. Thank you so much. So please, we're gonna have the budget, uh, meeting after this, and then we'll have a close session, okay? Item number thirteen, adjournment. Can I have a motion in the floor to adjourn?
The most.
Probably moved in second. Thank you, Jared. Um. Any discussion? Objection, extensions, hearing none. Um, our legislative meeting for mayor and council for. The first one in April twenty twenty-four has come to an end. So stay tuned cuz we have another meeting. So agenda of the proposed FY twenty-four budget legislative meeting, American Council. City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, virtual meeting Tuesday, April second, following the legislative meeting. Can you put it up just a little bit? Thank you so much. Alright, so I'm gonna call to order, Chesek.
Here.
Buro.
I'm here.
So first.
I'm here.
I'm getting better, okay? Danielle Carter.
Here.
And I am here, Benita's present. Alright, so. Review of the agenda. Vice Mayor, you better be drinking lots of water today. Go ahead, it's all yours.
One, call to order. Two, review the agenda. Three, discussion on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Four, reading of, reading of ordinance number zero three twenty twenty-four, an ordinance establishing the tax rate. Adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Five, public comment. And six, proposal to go into a closed session, according to the annotated code of Maryland. Um, have the statutory authority to close the session under general provisions of Article three, three oh five B, for reasons of subsections one and seven. One, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluations of appointees, employees, or office officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. And any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. And number seven, adjournment.
There was some posture there, Vice Mayor. What's up, what's going on? Alright, perfect. There's a, an agenda in front of you. Um, oh, good. Alright, moving on to item number three. Thank you, Luke. Uh, discussion proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. The mayor council have discussion the proposed FY twenty twenty-five. Budget. Uh, Mister Kamali, the floor is yours.
Okay, Mayor, thank you so much. So, uh, we start with. The tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and, uh. So I start with the residential and single-family home this year, we're not changing. The rate is gonna be point seven five. Per hundred dollars of assessed value. And, uh, the next, we have. Multi-family real property tax rate, which is same as last year. Which is point eighty-six per hundred dollars of assessed value. And the next one is commercial real property tax rate stays as, uh, same. Point seven nine per hundred dollars. And then the next one, industrial real property rate stays the same as FY twenty-four. Point seven nine per hundred dollars. And the last one is townhouse real property stays the same. And it's going to be point seven five per hundred dollars. And we have a yield tax rate, a constant yield tax rate, which is point seven two four seven. Per hundred dollars. Then the next bracket, we have the business property tax, which is stays point nine nine per hundred dollars of assessed value. And the next one, we have railroad and utility, public utility tax rate. Which is going to be same as FY twenty-four, point, uh, two dollars, I'm sorry, two dollars, seventy-five cents. Per hundred dollars of assessed value. And the last one, vacant developed. Tax is going to be two point five per hundred dollars. And nothing has changed comparing to FY twenty-four. Alright, this section, I'm gonna turn it over to Ron Wilson with the new changes that the mayor and council asked us to do some. Changes on. The general revenue, and I believe it's in the, mostly in the. Expenditure and other department. Ron, are you there?
So Mister Kamali, before you go to Ron, um, a support of information for our community on our Saturday budget meeting. Um, our team, combination Mister Kamali and Ron read. Line item by line item of the whole entire budget. So that was done in accordance to our rules, so everything was read down to the last penny. Okay, so these are some of the modifications, um, also included that have been suggested in the budget, okay? So Ron, thank you so much. The floor is yours.
Sure, so, um, none of the numbers have changed from the reading on the twenty-third. We just, uh, changed. Um, or, uh, some of the, the descriptions and put some, uh, footnotes in it, so. Um, Melissa, if you would scan down slowly. Uh, I'll point them out. Alright, um. Okay, we can keep going. Okay, we can keep going. Go to mayor and council. Okay, stop right there. So, uh, line item five thousand that we originally called salaries. Um, we're now calling council stipends. That is a more accurate description of what the expense is because. Technically speaking, the council members are not employees of the city. Okay, Melissa, we can scan down further. So I believe that the next, um, change is gonna be for the police department. But, uh, don't scan too fast, just in case.
I know we asked you to add a couple descriptions, a couple of a lot of descriptions. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, um, stop right there. Uh, you'll notice that there's an asterisk for line item five thousand. We'll see that at the bottom. Um, in the materials and supplies, uh, there are asterisks for line fifty-two oh two computer equipment. And line fifty-two oh five for uniform. So let's scan down to the bottom of the page, Melissa. And, uh, I'll point out the, um, the asterisk. For the wages. Uh, we've added that police officers covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Will receive the five percent COLA that all city employees receive. Plus, they will receive a two percent merit increase as provided for in the CBA. Uh, the double asterisk, those two expenses up, uh, that we highlighted up above are being paid with ARPA funds in fiscal twenty-four. That's why they show a budget of zero for this year. Uh, and then we're adding them back into the operating budget for fiscal twenty-five. Okay, Melissa, let's go to, um, public works. So, uh, stop right there. Uh, line item fifty-two oh nine, that's a double asterisk. And then scan some more, Melissa. Uh, stop right there. Line fifty-two thirty sidewalk and street repairs, that's a, a single asterisk. And then line fifty-seven hundred capital project expense, street resurfacing. So, um, the first asterisk, um, was, um. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars was paid by ARPA funds in fiscal twenty-four. And then, uh, the double asterisk will be paid by Safe Streets for All Grant Funds. Starting in fiscal twenty-five and subsequent years. Okay, Melissa, we can go.
One thing.
Yeah.
For that one, can you go ahead? For that one, can you go ahead and if it's a five-year program, see if you could put a five-year program on it so that we know it's not like forever. Because unfortunately, it's not forever. Okay? So that clarification, so that way um, we know it's a five-year program starting in twenty twenty-five. If all works out, we, if we need to edit the, the footline, it's fine. If, but we're hoping that it starts in twenty twenty-five and it goes to like the five-year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Melissa, let's go to the grant funds. So uh, stop right there. So line forty-seven hundred point twenty green streets, we've added thirty-first imperium parrots. Okay, and then uh, further down. Uh, under uh, s- the green streets of city hall. Let's uh, stop right there. Uh, you'll see the expense fifty-eight ninety-nine point twenty green streets, we added thirty-first imperium parrots. And those are the changes to the budget pages. Now, there were some other. Um, things that you asked us to change in account descrip- descriptions. We've made those changes, we just didn't um. Send a new uh, new copy to you. It will be part of the final budget book. Okay?
That's fine, sorry.
Alright, any questions then?
Alright, thank you. So this is just for the descriptions. I know there was uh, um, some money about potentially there. Four thousand to fourteen thousand dollars that we were also talking, so that'll be part two. So council, I'm gonna break it down so that we are orderly on this and ask for please to keep the quorum and keep to the subject matter, please. If you don't understand if it's the right place to ask the question, ask that. And not just like, you know, attack. So I will say this to you guys. Is there any, based on what Ron just showed us on the screen, is there any question you have about? Those descriptions or anything else you think it needs to be added that wasn't added that you requested? That you could recall. We're good? Alright, go ahead, Luke.
Yeah. Sorry, I, I, I think it said that we, just for clarification, there were other edits to descriptions around events for cultural. Months that we will be making changes to and will be seeing at a later, good with a later copy, correct?
That is correct.
Yep.
So this is just for this one in the descriptions he submitted before, like he sends it to the final, you know. Before the final approval, so we could read through it and basically he's gonna do the same thing he did. Just review it with us so that we go uh portion by portion. Okay?
Thank you. And then the other thing I would say is.
Right.
The Arts Commission r- request, um, you know.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I can wait, I can hold that.
That was part two. So I'm breaking it down so that way, remember what I just said?
Yes.
Like I said, there's like fourteen thousand that we had talked about. That's a, that's a point two of the conversation. I wanna make sure I don't blur it, so that way. The staff knows directly what we're telling them yes to and move on to the second part. Okay? I just wanna make sure that's clear. Alright, Ron, so the ones he showed us, we're fine with, with those except for the minor addition that I asked you to do for um, the SS for all to. At the end of the year, so that was clear what the five-year program looks like. And if any chances, there is an extension that we could like, you know, address that next year before this budget assistance. Um, if you go out, that will really appreciate, so that we once again, they will know why, so that we remove so much money out of the city. To add that, because you know, if not, it, it seems like we cut down or we added and we're making miracles with little money. And I'd rather us be clear. And then on that be audited, wondering where like nine point seven million dollars came from out of thin air, right? So that what we all know. Alright, perfect. So that portion is done. Okay, Mr. Kamali, um, now moving on to the next portion of it. There was um, uh, fourteen thousand dollars that we were gonna work, ten thousand dollars for um. The Arts Commission and the other four thousand that we were gonna put into one line item. Okay? So that's the next point of discussion. Luke, I know you have um, you have said that you were. But I don't wanna put words into your mouth, potentially fine with us not dealing with the ten thousand dollars. And moving it to a budget amendment later on the year, so that way we do the most minimum. Changes in this budget at this point. Are we feeling that or, or the floor is yours, Luke?
Totally correct. Just wanna make sure that's in everyone's memory for when the budget amendment comes up later in the year. Thank you all.
Put a big ball note. Alright, so keeps up the dress and look so that way it potentially could go in, in the budget amendment number one, or if you think like, you know. So notice we've been doing a lot less budget amendments, usually they come at the end of the year. But if need be, we could always do it like before the December mark, if you feel like it's gonna be something for the spring. Okay? Yes, we're gonna put a big flag on it, um, Luke, to take care of that. Alright, perfect. So Mr. Kamali, up to this point, we're good. Right? Okay. Now the other four thousand dollars, I did suggest some places where we could get him. And if we could agree, that's, that's fine. If not, he has to figure out where to come up with the rest of the money. Alright, so Mr. Kamali, the, the floor is yours for the other four, four thousand dollars. So in writing what we've been doing all along, uh, when it comes to um, our other collective groups. Go ahead.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so what we have decided to have for line item fifty-five thirty-four, which is the June tenth. And we're gonna have June tenth slash pa- slash Black History. And the slash African Festival. So we're allocating five thousand dollars. We have already one thousand dollars in that line item, so we need to get four thousand dollars. From the balance, you know, budget that we have, which was hard for us to do that. And I do appreciate everybody's help. So from line item fifty-six forty-nine, which is the rent stabilization. We're gonna move fifteen hundred dollars and we're gonna leave only five hundred dollars in that line item. Uh, also from line item fifty-six forty-eight, which is the Police Advisory Board. We have two thousand dollars over there and we're gonna leave. Uh, we're gonna take fifteen hundred dollars from that line item to bring to line item fifty-five thirty-four. And the last one is going to be line item fifty-five fifty-three recreation program. We have ten thousand dollars over there. And I think we can, you know, borrow a thousand dollars from that line item in order to complete. Our five thousand dollars for the line item fifty-five thirty-four. And I do appreciate your help.
So just one thing, Mr. Kamali, two things. So for line item fifty-six forty-nine, rent stabilization board, if we could add that to the proposal, the budget and for. The Africa Caribbean festivals, that's what it is, instead of African festival. Okay, so I'll, I'll send you that in writing. That's fine. My, my apology if I didn't, I wasn't clear on that. Alright, so council, here's the proposal for the additional four thousand dollars. Um, added to the five thousand to reflect. Visually what we have been doing anyways, but that was like, it's visually for the community to see it. Okay, because we have been working on this. So I need to hear thumbs up so that we can move on, on what it looks like. Yes? Um, Valerie, we're good? Jared, good? Danielle?
I have a.
Alright.
I have a question.
Alright, hold on, hold on one second, just hold on. Okay, so we're gonna do this. I have, so far it's still good. This is just an amendment that Mr. Kamali will make once we move forward to this line item. Switching and then on the next um, on the next budget hearing, on the next budget meeting. Um, you guys have the calendar ready, right? He'll go ahead and incorporated these changes and provided to us so that we're fully know where this line items are being taken and moved from. So that was a, is um, is, is an amendment and then eventually he'll give it, he's gonna give us a clean copy when we're down to line of voting. Alright, so I wanna make sure facts are there, Mr. Kamali. Anything I'm missing when it comes to that? We're good?
No, thank you, Mayor. We're good, we're good. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. Go ahead, Danielle.
Um, I just have a question. Um, the uh, Police Advisory Board, that's fifteen hundred. Don't they just get, they only get two thousand? So that's cutting it all the way down to five hundred, or am I, or am I um, misunderstanding that line item, Mr. Kamali?
No, you, you are absolutely correct, but we allocated last year two thousand and so far they have not spent any money and I don't think that. They need more than five hundred dollars for, you know, that fiscal year. So I am proposing to mayor and council to borrow fifteen hundred from that line item because my budget is uh very tight. And I have to do it and I'm sorry if later on, they need the money, we'll find out what is the call, what is the reason for that money. And I'll bring it to mayor and council and we can, you know, see if there is a solution for it.
Nope, that makes sense. If they've only spent less than that, then that just makes perfect sense. Thank you for answering that, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And next time, please wait until I see the floor. Um, I will tell you guys this very clearly. You guys have to remember, we have a very, very. High budget and the team has done outstanding work in presenting a budget that's gonna be ready to be voted may. You know, so um, it's very beneficial for us. Uh, the other thing you guys have to remember, and I'm gonna be very clear, we need to walk away from this thought that. People have to waste every single penny in their line item. Because the reality is like that money that is not utilized for the budget year goes into our reserves. Um, and that's like money for a rainy day. Sometimes we put a little bit to try to calculate what is needed. But this mentality of like, we need to use every penny in the line item is not working, because if now we have to reduce the budget even more. You know, we put some data to in cases needed, right? But we will have to reduce it even more to make sure we tighten up some of the screws that are, that need to be added. But please stop thinking in mentality of like, waste every penny in your line item, you know, it's just not the way it works and the reality is like. None of us are in the business of trying to increase taxes, so let's stick to where we need to be and the grants are not promised. Um, it is gonna be very dry, what do they call them, very skinny cows in the next few years. And the fact that we have like, you know, we have been balancing our budgets, doing our audits and going after as much as we possibly can. Has helped us out a lot for not to increase taxes. So I do ask all the departments and the committees alike. Uh, please uh, be cautious that um, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're building um rainy day. COVID funding like ARPA is not gonna be drawing out of thin air and ARPA allowed us to be able to. Answer a lot of the calls that we need and get the city where it need to go, but. Infrastructure money is gonna do the same thing, but there's a twenty percent matching that we also have to be responsible. And we need to make sure we pay our debts as well. Alright, perfect. Alright, Mr. Kamali. We're good, um, go ahead and move the funding around as you propose and. On the next version of the budget, how do you call it, bring that um, bring the changes to, to us. And if you guys could add some of the descriptions in there way ahead, that's fine.
We will have it for the next uh, budget, which is on April the ninth, next Tuesday. We will have all the changes.
I know, we sound like we're gonna be seeing each other very often, but hopefully it may passes and we don't have to deal with this anymore. Alright, perfect. Okay, reading of ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty-four, in order establishing the tax rate, adopting annual budget and appropriating. Funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five begin July first twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. The American Council will have the first reading, so there's no bogey, just reading of the ordinance. Number oh three dash twenty twenty-four. Can you put it on screens, please, Millie? Luke is like, yes, I get to read more. Good, Luke, if you need any help, let us know and we'll, we'll um, we'll sub in, okay? But thank you for um, helping us with this.
Okay, this is ordinance number three, twenty twenty-four. Introduced by mayor and council, establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. Whereas in accordance with section six three oh three of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland. By July fifteenth of each year, the council of the city of Mount Rainier shall set the tax rate for the next fiscal year on all assessments of property subject to municipal corporation property tax and. Whereas a public hearing must be held prior to the establishment of the municipal corporation tax rate if the new tax rate will exceed the previous year tax rate as calculated by the state of Maryland Department of Assessment and Taxation and. Whereas the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five will exceed the blended constant yield tax rate of point seventy-two s- four seven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And whereas pursuant to City of Mount Rainier Charter section seven oh two point A. The city manager submitted a recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to the council for its review and consideration. And whereas the budget provides a complete financial plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and contains estimates of anticipated revenue and proposed expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. And whereas, the City of Mount Rainier Charter section. Seven oh two point B requires the council to conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget prior to adoption of the budget. And whereas the council held a public hearing on the tax rate. And to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and tax on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And whereas after considering the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget submitted by the city manager and the comments that were made at the public hearing on the budget and tax rate. The council adopts the budget and tax rate as set forth in this ordinance. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland. Whatever day we pass this as follows, tax, section one, tax rate, real property. The tax rate for all single-family residential real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The tax rate for all townhouse residential real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The tax rate for all multifamily residential real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be eighty-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The tax rate for all commercial real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The tax rate for all industrial real properties subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-nine cents. Per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The tax rate for all vacant developed real properties subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be. Two dollars fifty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Tax rate, business personal property. The tax rate for all business personal properties subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be ninety-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Section three, tax rate, operating property of railroads and public utilities. The tax rate for all operating property of railroads and public utilities subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be two dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Section four, general fund revenues, the following amount should be adopted and appropriate as the general fund budget for all revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning. July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Tax revenue, six million four hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Licenses and permits, six hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Intergovernment revenue, five hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars fifty-seven cents. Charges for services, twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars. Fines and forfeitures, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Miscellaneous, one million one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Grants, four million nine hundred thousand eight hundred dollars. Total budget revenue, fourteen million five hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Section five, general fund expenditure categories. The following amount should be adopted and appropriate as the general fund budget for all expenditure categories for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Wages and leave pay, three million four hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Employee benefits and services, two million sixty-two. Thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety cents. Materials and supplies, two hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Repairs and maintenance, one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Professional services, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Other services and charges, three hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Community activities, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Infrastructure and f- facility maintenance, nine hundred thousand one hundred dollars. Capital outlay, capital project, one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Debt services, two hundred and thirty-six thousand ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Grant expense, four million nine hundred thousand eight hundred dollars. Total budget expenditures, fourteen million. Five hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Section six, general fund expenditure categories by department, the following amount should be adopted and appropriate as the general fund budget for all expense. Expenditure categories by department for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. City governance, eighty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. City Hall, seven million eight thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars fifty-eight cents. Administrative Services Department, seven hundred three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Code Compliance Department, four hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Economic Development Department, three hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Police Department, three million six hundred and four thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Public Works Department, two million one hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Debt services, two hundred and thirty-six thousand ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Contingency, forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents for total budgeted. Department expenditures of fourteen million five hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Total full-time equivalent employees for each departments are as follows. City Hall, budget in FY twenty-three, three. FY twenty-four, three, and we're in FY twenty-five, three. Administrative Services. For FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, what remains is five. Code Compliance for FY twenty-three.
Have to read the budget FY twenty-five, uh, Luke.
Gotcha. Um, Administrative Services, FY twenty-three, five. FY twenty-four, five. FY twenty-five, five. Code Compliance, FY twenty-five, four. Economic Development, FY twenty-five, one. Economic Development, FY twenty-five, one. Police Department, FY twenty-five, twenty-three. Public Works, FY twenty-five, ten. Total budgeted full-time employees in FY twenty-five is forty-six, which has remained consistent since FY twenty-three.
Okay, so this is the first reading of this. And as a point of information, although we moved four thousand dollars to a line item because it was be, in the same category um, of items, the numbers still stay, um, the same. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we move it within, um, the same category to make sure we do not mess with this too much. All right, so this is your first reading. There's no vote to it. And, um, I do wanna thank Meli for making sure she's keeping us up to date because there's a lot of, and obviously under supervision, Mr. Kamali, the city manager. There's a lot of technicalities that go through it when it comes to what day we need to read this, when it has to be published, when it has to be sent, when it has to be submitted. It's not a matter of just saying the day of us like randomly picking days. Um, as a city clerk, she is the person that makes sure and closely watching by the city manager that we are in line with what we need to be doing to make sure that when we do vote, um, for the changes and things that we have done, that we have met every single requirement for, um, for the budget and for the state, right? And then on the other end, Mr. Kamali as well, make sure that when the audit comes around, um, we, he has every single document approved with his team that this has gone through the due diligence of what's been approved and assigned and so on and so on and so on. Okay? All right, so you have heard the first wonderful reading of oh three dash twenty twenty-four. Meli, do you have in top of your head, um, is the nine that we're gonna have a second reading of this? So when is the next time we have a, a reading of this document?
It's going to be on Tuesday, Mayor, next Tuesday. According to the, uh, FY twenty-five budget, you know, calendar that we have. So.
But and then it goes to approval until we make no more changes in the pennies, right? That's until May?
Exactly.
All right, Meli? You were gonna say something? So you'll see this document over and over again until we pass it officially, making sure we, we are in the compliance of it. All right, so again, because we move, uh, the four thousand dollars within the same category, those numbers are still, um, are still the same. Okay, and thank you, Luke, also for making sure that, um, that we move forward to, um, that our commission ten thousand dollars are gonna be reviewed later on, because that saved us, um, a lot of times. So appreciate your patience on that and making sure you trust the process. And that has helped us out a lot. So thank you for that, okay? All right, so uh, moving on to public comment. We're gonna go ahead and open up to public comment. You have three minutes to make public comment relating to items are here. Please remember to remain courteous. We will not name people and businesses or cities and so on and so on and so on because we need to be respectful of our neighbors. If you have a complaint against, um, staff member, send an email directly to the city manager. That means for all departments. And we thank you guys for that. Okay? Jared, is anything on Facebook? Jared with a D. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. I see nothing on the chat neither. All right, moving on to the next item, item number six. And I know Vice Mayor read it, but here's a full reading as well for the second time tonight. Proposal to go into closed session according to the Annotated Code of Maryland, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland have a statutory to close a session under general provision, article three dash three oh five B for the reasons of subsection one and seven. One, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation, five point T's, employees or officials over whom the public has jurisdiction. Any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Number seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The Mayor and Council will propose to go into closed session to discuss the personnel and consult with a city attorney to obtain legal advice. So I have a motion in the floor to go into closed sessions for a recent three oh, three dash three oh five B, subsection one and seven. Can I have a second?
Second.
Has we probably moved in second discussion? Objections, suspensions here and now, uh, we are gonna be going officially into closed session. So thank you guys so much and, um, Council, you know what you're supposed to be doing. All right, thank you guys so much and have a, have a good night and, um, thank you guys. And our wonderful Vice Mayor will report about our closed session in our next wonderful meeting, because he's on top of that as well. So have a good night.
Night.
Thank you, sir.
Is we probably moved and second? Any objections, suspensions, discussions? None. Right, so this meeting has come to an end. Thank you guys so much.
Mayor, who's second the motion?
Me, Valerie.
Valerie will.
Okay, noted.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Valerie Woodwell. Thank you, Luke. Have a good night. All right, bye.
Bye, good night.
Recording stopped.
My thing.
Thank. Keep. Carrie.